Good morning all. We're having just a tiny bit of technical difficulties with launching to Facebook, but the meeting is live and we should get started here in just a moment.
Wait a minute. Ms. Shannon, if you can hear me.
Good morning, I can't hear you.
You can't, I can barely hear you. Let's try that one more time. Check your audio for me.
Yes ma'am, doing that. My phone is up, can you hear me any better?
I can hear you much better now.
Very good.
The only two people that are unmuted now are you and myself, so that we, I think we can get started. They have not given me a total okay, but I want to be respectful of everyone's time. It's ten oh seven now. And I've stated to some people, they will see, take notes trying to answer these text messages because they're coming in. And then also people are asking to be admitted to the meeting at the same time. So let me do an official good morning to everyone and thank you for being on this call or this Zoom meeting today. Uh, my goal as Commissioner of Henry County District Four is to give out information to help us, to help us get prepared for where we're going. Now only do I want to be a Commissioner, but I want to be an engaged community citizen as well. And one of the things you have seen, uh, we are a part of is going through the COVID nineteen crisis. And going through that crisis, we need to remember, we are going to go through it. And that's what's important, we are going to go through it. It will not, it may be here for a while, it may be here for something like a cold, but we are going to master whatever it takes to live with it or live without it. Uh, hopefully they will find what type of vaccine is needed so we can all live amongst each other again and not have those sense of fears of who has COVID or who does not have COVID. But in the meantime, we need to get prepared and position ourselves to be successful in and out of a crisis. And sometimes we have to determine what do we need to do to get prepared to live on the other side of COVID. And one of those things we need to do is talk about what resources are around us that we can take advantage of. And this morning I have the pleasure of introducing to some of you, some of you already know because she did a splendid job at the series that we do, which is called Business Over Breakfast every fifth Saturday of the month. And the whole goal of Business Over Breakfast is to have, uh, different individuals on there to talk about economic empowerment, uh, talk about entrepreneurship. What can we do to create jobs? What can we do to make our business stronger? How do we connect those businesses to the county, to the state, to the federal government? And so we do that every fifth Saturday to make sure that we understand we can have access to these dollars that are out there. Today the focus on community development block grants. And we have Ms. Shannon Segat, and I almost said you were last thing correct. We all miss, uh, here with us today. She is Director of Community Block Grants here in Henry County. I'm going to let her introduce herself for just a moment and then we're going to get right into the topic, okay? Ms. Shannon, please.
Yes, good morning, thank you Commissioner Thomas for having me. It's a pleasure to speak with you this morning and to share information with our community in regards to the community development program. So again, thank you.
Okay, well, let's get started. Why don't we just start? Let's talk about for just a moment, what a community block grant really is and where does it come from? And how do we get involved in that? Uh, so many times I have heard people say, uh, we can't participate in community block grants. We really don't know what it is. And so let's talk about for just a moment, if you will Shannon, uh, talk about what is a community development block grant? And most of us say, sure, community block grant, but it's actually a community development block grant. Let's talk about the purpose, what a community development block grant really is.
Certainly, yes, the Community Development Block Grant Program is through the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. Henry County is an entitlement jurisdiction, um, having a population exceeding two thousand. As an entitlement, Henry County does receive an allocation of this community development block grant program, commonly known as CDBG, on an annual allocation. With that, we are able to administer an assist in community development needs. We work with the city within the county, county departments as well as individual organizations in our county. Through the utility use of these funds, organizations are able to further assistance that they provide, expand their services and assist additional individuals. We do applications on a bi-annual basis. Individuals and organizations are invited to apply during those times to, um, seek funding from the CDBG program.
Okay, okay, you said a lot, so we're going to try to break it down. Uh, first of all, you stated these are federal dollars that are coming down to the local level. Now those federal dollars are normally coming down based on some type of formula. Don't go into all the formula, please, but just give us the surface of what that formula looks like to determine how much money a particular area can possibly qualify for.
Yes ma'am, keeping it surface level, that formula is based on our population. Why our U.S. Census is so important, is also based on our housing stock and the percentage of low to moderate income persons in our community.
Thank you, thank you, and you said the magic word to me. It is really based upon that census. Okay, which we're going to take a little commercial break right here and say, please complete your Census twenty twenty. Based on those numbers, determine how much money possibly Ms. Shannon will get for this community. If we do not complete that census, that money could possibly go to another community and we'll be losing out, we don't want to do that. So for those who are saying right now, oh, I don't want to do the census, so they just want to know my business. No, they do not want to know your personal business, I've already done mine, yes, 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 so I can talk about this. It only takes about ten minutes to do, there are no personal questions on there. They just want to know basically how many people live in your house. And based on that number, we can then determine that how much money would come to Henry County in this format. This is just one of the ways that is used, but this format, the Community Development Block Grant, does touch the community directly. And that's why I'm saying for this little bitty commercial here, please, complete your census so that we can count on getting these dollars back to Henry County and back to the community. Now another thing she said too, that there is an application process that we have to go through and it's done, uh, bi-annually. Let's talk about your application process in Henry County and where we are in that process now.
Yes ma'am, so for the regular round of CDBG, we will be opening our application process in December twenty twenty. That will be for our twenty twenty one and our twenty twenty two physical years. Our physical year starts June, excuse me, July one through June thirtieth.
Oh my goodness, now, again, and thank you, thank you so much. Usually I have people say to me and have said to me before I got into office, we always learn about things after the fact, okay? You're not behind the bar this time, you know upfront that you have the time right now to acquire, participate in these community development block grants. Not after the fact, not after the money is gone. And I remember having a lunch meeting with someone and their whole complaint was that we were left out of the community development block grants. I said, okay, how were you left out? Well, we missed the deadlines, okay, well, if you missed the deadlines, you can't participate. We wanted to know where are the deadlines, okay? This is the second public meeting I have had on this. The first one was a public meeting where we actually report COVID and we were able to gather together in a meeting place and we had a very good turnout there. Uh, we put information out there, handouts out there, dates out there, the application process. So now today you're beginning to learn this whole thing, the application process. You have until December, you say applications start in December, is that correct?
Applications will be released in December, they're typically due back no sooner than forty-five days following the release date. And in the past, that's typically been in the first week of February.
Thank you. And if you're wondering what that application process look like, uh, would you describe for me what things are normally asked on that application? So people can say, how do I get prepared before December, before getting that paper in my hand? What are we looking for on that application?
Yes ma'am, and I actually have a perfect example of an application. When you called on last week, I know I kind of rushed suggesting this week for us to have this meeting, but the reason for that was so individuals could also hear that we have additional or supplemental funds under CDBG specific for COVID nineteen. For organizations that may not be prepared to apply under COVID nineteen or their services don't line up with the COVID nineteen and what needs are there. The application that is online for COVID would be an excellent example of what information would be required. So upfront, we're looking for financial documentation such as an audit. We're looking for information on the organization's history, their mission, how the services that they provide line up with the needs in our overall community. How their services, if assisted with CDBG, will be expanded. We also are looking at how those proposed activities line up with our consolidated plan.
Now, you, um, I'm going to go back and make a few notes to Shannon. Now I want you all to know, she did hurt my feelings, she really did. Uh, because I said, well Shannon, can I apply for some of these funding? And she specifically told me, no Commissioner, you cannot. I said, okay. And she said, I cannot, my organization cannot. So Commissioner Thomas will not be filling out that application. Somebody out there watching this meeting or listening to it or who came to the first one will probably have money that's due to me, selfishly speaking. But now she's telling you ahead of time what you need to have in order. Financial audits, you can get a financial audit from an accountant. You need to get those things in order. You need to get your business profile in order, so you can include that profile in there of what your business have done and what it can do. You need to put in there who and how your services link with the purpose and goals of the community development block grant. So if you say, well, we make ice cream and that's not a part of the goal of the community development block grant, you should not expect to receive funding, okay? Because that's not what they want to do. But if indeed you serve the senior citizen, indeed if you are serving, um, youth in some capacity and I'm making up certain topics and those topics are in alignment with the consolidated plan, then you may be considered. Now, that consolidated plan, where can they find out what the consolidated plan is for Henry County and what's in it, where can they find that information?
Yes ma'am, so the twenty seventeen to twenty nineteen consolidated plan is currently on the county's website. We are also in the process of developing our twenty twenty through twenty twenty four consolidated plan. We will be presenting an amendment to our twenty seventeen to our twenty nineteen consolidated plan in just a couple of weeks, and that is to include the funds for COVID. So for individuals and organizations that provide services that will be of benefit to individuals and households in Henry County during this pandemic, we do invite them to look to our website for the application specific for the COVID funds.
So you have emergency funds now to help individuals that are serving in capacity to, um, to assist people affected by COVID nineteen. Those monies are now, and that application is now on the website?
That is correct, we are seeking for organizations, service providers who provide services to prevent, prepare for and respond to COVID.
Okay, now my church is here there, because again, I have these people who stop me, even when I'm trying to worship my Lord and Savior and ask me questions. And it says to prevent, prepare, what was that other one?
And respond to.
And respond to. So if you find yourself in one of those categories, you have the right to apply for these monies that are available now. I know there are a lot of churches that are serving in food capacities, there are churches that are helping with rental assistance. Uh, I'm not sure if they're doing mortgage assistance, but they very well may be helping with mortgage assistance. Uh, they may be helping with clothing and other housing placements. I do know some churches who are putting people in some hotels to help them not be out on the streets and have a place to live because of COVID. Uh, so I'm simply saying if you are doing some of these things in those capacities, you now have the opportunity to apply for funds now to help you continue what you're doing. It has already been projected that we will be, um, maybe not in the, in the, uh, highest point of COVID, but we'll be still working through COVID, through the end of this year in some form or fashion, okay? Uh, hopefully next year we won't have to begin the year like this, but we'll be working through other forms of fashion of COVID throughout this year. So if you find yourself and your organization is doing something in this capacity, you need to be on our website, now that's the Henry County Board of Commissioners, looking for community development block grants, to say, this is what I'm doing now. What assistance is available for me now to help continue what I'm doing? Yes, it's a ministry for you, but that very well may be a pot, an opportunity for you to find funds to help you, help the community. So thank you so much for Shannon, to know that these funds are available now and then the other part of that is for December. But the most important thing I want you to remember is get yourself in position. Get yourself in position to make sure you can participate. If you don't get yourself in position, then you won't be able to participate when these funds, in this application process. And I'm checking my phone you guys, because I told you people are still sending in questions and what have you. Okay, the next thing I want to talk about, if you will Ms. Shannon, we talked about this is money coming from the federal government. It is in the form of a grant, it is designed to touch the community directly, to have impact in the community. Um, let's talk about some of the things you've done in the past with the monies that you've been in a lot in Henry County. Just to give people an idea of what you've been able to do. And, uh, I do love this lady because again, she touched the community directly, okay? So you have, you're a part of my heart for serving our community. So let's talk about some of the things you've done in the past to touch Henry County to make some things better for us.
Yes ma'am, and Commissioner Thomas, I think I've shared with you before, what I enjoy so much about the CDBG program is just that, that we are able to directly impact those in greatest need in our community. So we, Henry County has been a recipient of the Community Development Block Grant Program since twenty twelve. Since that time, we have done road and street improvements, sidewalks in low to moderate income areas. We have worked with organizations that provide direct assistance to homeowners and renters in our communities for mortgage and rent assistance as well as utility payments. We work with our local shelters so that they may continue to provide the needs for individuals who are homeless. We also work with organizations that provide job training. We have assisted to prevent flooding in neighborhood, residential neighborhoods. We have done stormwater improvements, we also work with contractors in our community to assist homeowners in their rehab needs to ensure that their homes remain affordable and, excuse me, affordable and that they can maintain livable spaces.
Okay, now, I'm going back to reiterate a couple of things you said. Um, you have actually done sidewalks and people calling me for sidewalks, but you have actually done sidewalks in communities because they were needed.
Yes ma'am.
You said you helped with rehabs, and I remember one case coming before us and I think it was about a septic tank. And there was a family that was in dire need to have a corrected septic tank done for their home. Uh, and you were able to help with that, did that family have to pay you back?
Our housing rehab program, which includes our septic tank repair replacement program, those are forgivable loans. By the nature of being forgivable, as long as that household remains in the home for that affordability period, the loan is forgiven. But should they sell or vacate the property and rent it out to someone else, just as an example, then they have to repay it. Because our program is designed to make certain the home is affordable for that individual household. So as long as they maintain the home and depending on the dollar amount of assistance, it could be five to ten years. As long as they maintain the home as their primary residence, the grant is forgiven.
Okay, so what we cannot have are our people who are trying to be investors come in and have you do a rehab for a house, then turn around and make money off of it. That's not the program.
That is correct, the way our program currently runs, the only rental assistance we provide is to our public housing authorities in Henry County, that's the Hampton and the McDonough Housing Authority. Otherwise, we are seeking to assist homeowners with rehab needs.
Thank you, and I said that like that because I didn't want someone to go out and say, oh, let me go and apply for this money and, uh, get a new rooftop on and then rent it out and make some money. No, this is designed for people, especially our senior citizens who've been in their homes for twenty and thirty years and now they need some work, they may need their windows done because the windows are really outdated. Uh, they are not what they call, uh, energy efficient at this point in time and they can apply for assistance for that. But these people have to stay in their homes for a certain period of time. So you would not get away with saying, well, Uncle Joe's still there, no, this is for the homeowner. Uh, and this program works so well because they do do an energy efficient, uh, thing for homes. They do make sure that lead, if lead is there, they will try to abate those kinds of things. They are looking for older homes that have asbestos in it and need someone to help with that, remove that. Um, they're looking for the ways to help people in the community stay in their Um, they're looking for the ways to help people in the community stay in their homes and have homes that are livable. And there are some homes that need some assistance, where our grandmothers have been in them 40 and 50 years, but can't afford to repair them. That's when that application comes to Ms. Shannon. She can, her and her crew can review it, determine if it meets the needs that are needed for that, and is able to help with that as well. Okay, and I'm seeing some things pop up on the screen. It goes up and down too fast for me to read it there. For those who do have my cell phone number, send your comments via text, a question via text, and I'll be glad to try to make those comments as well, because I'm seeing some very good ones. So thank you, Ms. Moore, for the comments that you're putting up. Please send them to me, so that I can continue to share them as well. Now, in doing this, um, we talked about the things that she do to impact the community. In doing this, now, Ms. Shannon does not go out herself with a hammer and nail to make this, to make this happen. She has to find quality people to do that. Let's talk about for a moment how people who have small businesses can partner with you to get some of this work as well.
Yes, ma'am. So we are also under the COVID. We will be, this application has not been released as of yet, but we will be releasing an application specifically designed for our small business owner. The goal there is to assist them in the short term with some of their financial needs. It can be utilized to assist with salary payments, including fringe benefits such as health insurance for employees. It can be utilized for their lease or mortgage payments, and even utilities on their businesses. Um, it also can be utilized for the purchase of equipment needed to carry out their business.
Ms., Ms., uh, Shannon, what you just said that's so important about our small businesses, um, I heard it, believe me, but I really would like for you to say it one more time. So the people that are listening can understand what you just stated, how important it really is.
Yes, ma'am. For COVID, additional funds to the CDBG program have been released. And those funds, a portion of Henry County's funds, will be utilized to assist small businesses. Um, the applications for this have not been released as of this date. Our staff is still developing that program and the application for that. However, the goal for those funds will be able, will be to provide short-term financial assistance to small businesses. Funds can be utilized to supplement salaries for staff, to include fringe benefits. It can also be utilized for mortgage or lease payments for that business, and utility payments for that business. Funds can also be utilized for the acquisition of equipment for that business.
You sure I can't participate?
Yes, ma'am.
Gosh, oh my gosh. Okay. Now, look what she just said again, you all, and, and I'm watching my clock as well as you. Small businesses, we know that you need assistance in Henry County. We have gotten some funds, and hopefully we'll get more funds to help you with that. But she just said, they're completing the process to assist you with paying salaries, your benefits, your mortgage, your lease, and purchase equipment. Okay, there again, somebody out there will have my money, and I can't touch it. And I hope you do well with it, and hire other people in Henry County. But this is available to you. And we're gonna talk about giving you information as we go through this crisis and beyond this crisis, so that we can make sure, make sure that you're able to participate in this. What dates, uh, have they assigned dates to the money that's available for the COVID emergency assistance that you're talking about? What dates do they have to fall within to get the application in? Uh, when they will be, can receive those monies back? What kind of dates are we looking at?
Yes, ma'am. So currently, the application that is available online is for service providers, um, to assist with needs in our community related to COVID. As I mentioned, we're seeking how to prevent, prepare for, and respond to the coronavirus. That application deadline is May 11th. So we have just over one full week for that. This is an abbreviated application to what we typically release, just taking the short-term notice into consideration. However, funds will not be released until our Consolidated Plan and amended annual action plan have been approved by HUD. So I cannot state a date on when funds will be released. However, staff is preparing to submit or to present this proposal to the Board of Commissioners on May 19. Following that May 19th meeting, if approved, that information will be submitted to HUD. After that point, we'll be waiting on HUD's response and their release of those funds. After that, we will work as quickly as we can to get those agreements executed with those approved subrecipients and the Board of Commissioners, so agencies can begin to deliver those much-needed services.
Thank you so much. Now, to me, the most important thing you said is May 11th.
Yes, ma'am. That application is due.
Absolute, the application is due. Um, one of the things that I have put out on the brochure is get in position, okay? If you're not in position for these blessings, if you're not in position to receive these dollars, when they do come down, you will be overlooked. And I will hear a certain number of people say, "We didn't get anything." Get in position. Get your application in by May the 11th. We know that this is a very fluent, very, very fluent, uh, thing that's going on with COVID. Things are changing every day. We get so many situation reports as commissioners from our administration that came out from the state, that came out from the federal. Every day, everything is very fluid, and it changes every day. So what Ms. Shannon is saying is that, get your appli, get your application in by May the 11th, to get you in position to participate. Once you get in position to participate, whenever those dollars are released, then you have the opportunity to, uh, be awarded this money to help the community, okay? So, I don't know, that's not me, I'm hearing someone, but it's not me. But anyway, I hope you heard what she said. Now, the second thing is, the second thing, and I am trying to watch for the, uh, I am trying to watch for the questions on my phone. But the second thing is, now, only do you want to be in position, but if you are a provider, if you are a contractor, if you are a plumber, if you are, I'm just going to say landscape, and I am trying to pull titles out of there. If you are a roofer, uh, you specialize in this type of stuff, this is an opportunity to build a partnership with the compu, with the Community Development Block Grants to provide services. How are your awards made, Ms. Shannon? How do they need to sign up to participate, to do the services that you need? Because I really don't expect you to go out with a hammer and nail to make this happen. How do they do that?
Oh, yes, ma'am. Um, what you're referring to specifically will relate to our housing rehab and septic tank programs. So those contractors and those plumbers, we are definitely looking for those specialties to assist us. Um, we do request bids and proposals. Um, but individuals and organizations can email us at CDBGProgram, and I will send this in the comments. And we can help them to get on a list where we, that we utilize when we are requesting those quotes and proposals. Um, in following with the county's procurement policy, for all of our requests and proposals that exceed our certain financial limitations, we do RFPs. Uh, but for our smaller things, we are sus, uh, seeking quotes, and we contact organizations and contractors directly for those. So please feel free to email us. You can scan a business card or ensure that all of your contact information for your company is in the signature line of your email. If you have brochures or information to provide a summary of what services and, um, construction you deliver, please include that information.
Okay, you guys, now, for my small business owners, she's given you how you can participate. And you can be a provider through this program. Again, we want you to be in position, so get in position, get plugged in, so that you can participate and grow your business. And one of the things, she just put it up on the screen for those who are on Zoom. And if you missed that, it's still listed on the Henry County Board of Commissioners website. Hold on. I didn't say call me. I said text me, okay? Um, it is listed on the Henry County Board of Commissioners website. Then you can send your information directly into that area, that department. You'll be placed on their vendor providers list. She will respond to you, give you the opportunity to submit bids on different things that are coming forth. And you can, again, have access to what's in your county to help support your small business here. That's what it's all about. Get plugged in, get in position to, to, to participate in a growing Henry County. So you hear me doing these kind of things, I'll grow your business in a growing Henry County. Get plugged in at our contracting expo. Get in position by putting these other people before you to talk about what's here. I want you to be able to participate in your county, live in your county, so when we collect those tax dollars, you feel good about paying them, okay? Also, please go to our website to get that information. It's readily available. Uh, another thing I want to talk about for a moment, just to give people an idea of how much business you're doing. And I think you had stated in the coming year, you're preparing to try and secure a number of homes for rehabs. Can you give me an idea how many homes you're planning to secure, uh, and do some type of rehab, um, in the county?
Yes, ma'am. So what I believe you're referring to is through our Neighborhood Stabilization Program. Henry County was a recipient of the Neighborhood Stabilization Program, um, during the housing crisis which started around 2008. Excuse me. We received funding, um, three different allocations from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, as well as from the Georgia Department of Community Affairs. The purpose of the Neighborhood Stabilization Program is to acquire rehab and then sell to low to moderate income buyers, homes within the county that were foreclosed. The homes that are acquired by the county are rehabbed and brought up to code and standards that are livable. We make these homes move-in ready, so that they are affordable for income-eligible buyers. We are seeking homes to acquire. Excuse me, and we are working with contractors to rehab those homes. Um, in, and actually, we will be seeking subrecipients to assist us in the rehab of homes. Um, that RFP will probably be out in the next two to three weeks. But we're also, for those smaller jobs, we're looking for contractors, um, to come in and do specialty work.
Okay, um, so you may be looking to secure somewhere between 20 to 25 homes, you think, which here?
So, that is, we don't have a specific number. Um, because we're at the tail end of our Ne, the stabilization program. From 2008, the county has acquired probably close to 375 homes. Wow, we're at the tail end. There are no additional NSP homes coming out. Um, this can, this was a one-time thing from the U.S., um, Department of Housing and Urban Development in response to our housing crisis. This was a part of the stimulus package at that time.
Okay.
Um, so with that, we have limited number of funds that we're continuing to utilize. We are utilizing our program income at this time. Um, so considering the limited number of foreclosed units in the market currently, um, we're having to pay more for units than what we did in 2008 and 2010. So that's why it's so difficult for us to put a number on the homes that we are seeking to acquire, because foreclosed units are not priced as well as they were previously. But that's a good thing for our economy.
Okay, well, thank you. And then, no, she did say, during this whole process, and from 2008 to present, they have, uh, participated in, they have, um, secured over 375 homes or renovated, close to that many homes. Now, I only took my seat about a year ago, so this is the first I've been able to share this with you. For those who have calculated, why didn't we know before? I was not in this chair then, okay? I am trying to make sure to keep you informed now what's coming ahead of time, so you can participate. But that's 375 homes. The small business owners should have been able to participate in their county to grow their business. That's very, very important. And what we need to have you do is to think about, now that you know about this information, hold on one moment, still trying to get these messages out to people. There we go. Um, you know, I don't have anybody around me, so I have to do it all. I'm running this meeting, running that screen, hearing these texts. I'm getting it done, you know, getting it done. But now that you know, you could there again, get yourself in position, get yourself in place, so that you can participate going forward. And she definitely need contractors to help her as she go forward, to renovate these homes. And as she go forward, to do the streets, and do the sidewalks, and do the concrete, do the other things that, that are happening in this community, you still can participate in that. Now, let's go back for a moment, Ms. Shannon. We talked about the thing, small businesses, and the construction side of it, and getting those businesses involved, and making sure that they can support their business by finding some way to work for the CDG, I like to say Community Block Grant, but Community Development Block Grant Program. Now, you stated that you also have partnerships and work with other agencies that do services to the community.
Yes, ma'am.
And I have a number of agencies that are concerned, how can we get involved? Because they provide services to the community. Let's talk about that for just a moment.
Yes, ma'am. So this would specifically come in play with our public service portion of the CDBG Development Block Grant Program. And, excuse me, we are working with nonprofit service providers. Um, currently, we work with service providers to provide for the needs for subsistence payments. These are payments to mortgages and rent, um, to assist individuals in the community so that they can maintain their housing, um, or to prevent homelessness. Uh, we also work with agencies to assist with utility payments. We work with shelters to provide shelter and food and transportation and clothing, those essential to life needs for individuals that are experiencing homelessness in our community. We work with a medical clinic in the county um, to ensure that the underinsured or the uninsured residents of Henry County can get the medical treatment that they need. We are, we seek applications from organizations of various natures in the services that they provide, um, such as youth programs, senior programs, even legal services. Um, oftentimes, when individuals are fighting to maintain their homes, there's a legal aspect there. Um, and that's just one example. But we also are seeking applications from, through our regular CDBG round for those type of services. Um, we can assist with food banks for the purchase of food to be donated or given to low to moderate income persons. So with our public service programs, it is designed to be of benefit to our low to moderate income in Henry County. That is households at or below 80% of their median income.
Thank you. She said so much, and I was making my list as you were speaking about some of the things that you do. Now, this goes back to organizations. So now, remember, Ms. Shannon does not write a check directly to Sally Ann to help her with her mortgage or her rent or utility. She does not do that. What she does, through an application process, an approval process, will give money to, I should say, grant money to, not just give, but grant money to, um, the House of Hope. And I hopefully, hopefully I made up a name. So somebody will call me and say, "You used my name up." Okay, let's call it Vivian's House of Hope, because Vivian can't get any money, okay? So she would actually grant to Vivian's House- So she would actually grant to Vivian's House of Hope, two or three hundred thousand dollars. Vivian's House of Hope, through the application process, was approved for this grant. It is in alignment with the goal and consolidated plan of the Community Development Block Grant. Got to make sure you're in alignment. I have a plan that's specific as to how I will distribute those funds. Cannot come up to Ms. Shannon and say, "I'm a good person, I'm going to do the right thing, I'm going to give this money out." You must have a proven plan to show how these funds will be distributed, because you will get audited, okay? Then Vivian's House of Hope may very well now have two hundred thousand dollars. And now my goal is to find senior citizens, my goal is to find, um, and my goal is to find senior citizens, um, maybe the homeless population, or families that are in distress, to help them with certain payments. That's what it's for. It is not designed to give Vivian's House of Hope brand-new furnishings in her office so she can feel good having meetings, okay? So there are specifics that you have to make sure you follow. But she aligns herself with these recipients of these grants to help the community. Going back to my churches who, who say, "We do this," okay, now this is a time to give assistance to do that. This is a time for Vivian's House of Hope to get assistance. This is a time for Shannon's Youth in Distress, uh, awareness to get assistance. And I am trying my best to make up some names here, so that you can see this is designed to help students with, uh, family with programs with disabilities. Maybe there's a program out there that's working with students with disabilities. And they have come, and they want to put an application. This is the time to do that. So if you find yourself having a company or an organization that serves the communities with special needs from utilities, disabilities, senior, youth programs, uh, shelters, feeding, food banks, your applications can come to the Community Development Block Grant for assistance. And you may very well be awarded money to continue doing the great things you do for the community. That's why I wanted you to know about this program. That's why we're here today, to get you in position to participate, to plug you into what your county has available to support your small business, to let you know this is happening now, you can participate in that. Uh, I'm looking at my clock, Ms. Shannon, and I know there are probably more questions out there, and we can't answer all of this at one time, but we can send them to your website to get more information about this. And what I would do, if you would help me, is put together a fact sheet. Very simple, like I've been putting out other newsletters, uh, try to make it very, very simple to understand. A fact sheet that I'm going to put out to everyone, um, that you and I can put together and work with our communications team to make sure we're giving them information that they need to follow through on this. More than anything, go on the Henry County, um, Board of Commissioners website, look up Community Development Block Grants, and there is direct information there. How to contact Ms. Shannon, uh, things that you need to do to get prepared to participate. Because if you don't get in the position, and if you don't get plugged in, yes, you will be left out again. I am doing the best I can as your commissioner to make sure that does not happen. Ms. Shannon, before we close out, I want to give you an opportunity, anything in summary you would like to say to our audience? So we have a, a very good audience, it's a huge audience, more than I expected, but thank you guys for being here. Ms. Shannon, please.
Yes, thank you all for being here. Thank you for your questions and your time and your commitment to serving Henry County residents. The CDVG program is here as a partner in our community to assist those in need and to be of service and partners to our community service providers. Please feel free to contact our department via email at cdvgprogram@co.henry.g a.us. There is also, as Commissioner Tom has mentioned, information available on the county's website under the Community Development Block Grant Program. You'll also find some community, um, concerns listed there and some information released to us by the federal government as it relates to our programs. You'll also find information there about our Neighborhood Stabilization Program. Please be aware that funds are available. On average, Henry County does receive a million dollars a year to be of service and to deliver community development, to deliver community development services within our community. For public service activities, we are limited by federal law to fifteen percent. The majority of our funds are utilized to assist with housing rehab needs, infrastructure improvements, demolition and clearance, as well as public facility needs. We do also assist, I was naming some things, and I saw one individual mention parks. Um, I forgot to mention parks. We've done probably four or five parks in Henry County, um, since two thousand and twelve. So there are great needs in our county. Um, you may not necessarily be a service provider or a contractor. You may actually know individuals that are in need. Those individuals can contact us, and we can refer them to our partners so that they can assist, uh, seek the assistance that they are in need of.
Do you have a list of your partners online as well, Ms. Shannon?
So we do not have a specific list, but they are listed in our annual action plan. That's where you can also find how much funding agencies are receiving from the Community Development Block Grant Program. You will find listed in that documentation what our goals and objectives are for our program. Um, you will find what those agencies are proposing to do, how many beneficiaries they are seeking to assist, um, and again, the amount of funding they receive from Henry County. Vivian's House, made up Vivian's House, fictional Vivian's House, received two hundred to three hundred thousand dollars. And realistically, our agencies are receiving twenty-five to thirty-five thousand dollars. Um, unfortunately, given the limited funds that we receive as a county, as I mentioned, um, on average, a million, a million dollars a year, there's only so many ways that we can cut that pie. Um, so we're not able to assist to such great levels, but we do stretch it as much as we can. I will also repeat that our public service funding dollars is capped at fifteen percent. Um, so if we're receiving a million dollars, we know fifteen percent of that is a hundred and fifty thousand. So that hundred and fifty thousand makes that pie even smaller. So we're cutting those pieces to about twenty-five thousand to maybe thirty thousand to assist with those direct assistance to public service providers.
You know, one of the things I want to state though, even though you're saying, um, how this money is distributed, we can increase that by making sure we complete our census.
Yes ma'am.
We can increase the amount of dollars that come to Henry County by doing one thing. Making sure you complete that census, asking your neighbors to complete the census. When you're out talking about the fact we do need to do our census, so that we have more money coming to the county. I know she has just miraculous things with the money has come here to Henry County. Uh, stating that she has already, from two thousand and eight, purchased three hundred and seventy-five homes. That's a lot of homes. Rehabbing those homes, that helps small businesses, and that keeps people employed in the county by doing those kinds of things. Uh, I know she's done sidewalks in the areas, because we've seen them. Now I know individuals, I've seen individuals that I have been helped because my entire front yard or backyard was falling in because of a septic tank, and they came out and they got it fixed for us. When you think about it from that perspective, you can see she's covering a lot of grounds. And the partners that she's working with, they're listed in her annual action plan, these, these agencies. Look on there and see what type of money different people are getting and what they're doing with that money. If you're working with a homeless population and you get twenty-five thousand dollars, you can make some things happen with that. If you're working with a youth organization and you get thirty thousand dollars, you have some money to change lives, uh, for some of our young people going through distressed situations. So please don't count yourself out, but think about what can I add to that to make it better? I hope I'm at ten fifty-nine based upon my clock. Uh, I hope that you have gained some useful information this morning from our Community Development Block Grant Coordinator and Director, Ms. Shannon. And I hope you will follow through on it, because our goal is to make sure you participate in what's available here in Henry County. When you get in position, when you get plugged in, then you can grow your business in a growing Henry County. If you do not, then outsiders come in. And they're not bad people, they're just trying to grow their business as well. But we want you to live here, work here, play here, and enjoy your county, and this is one of the ways you can do it. I know we didn't answer everyone's question, it's impossible to do so now, but you're welcome to email us, email Ms. Shannon, email me as well. My email address, VThomas, uh, let me see, VThomas@co.henry.g a.us. And thank you, Ms. Meredith, for helping me with that. But you can email me as well, and I do answer my emails. It may take me a little while, but I get them back out to you. And we will answer your emails and tell you what you can do to participate, to position yourselves to participate. With that being said, I have to say have a wonderful blessed day. We want you, I'm sorry, Ms. Shannon, go ahead.
Yes ma'am. I failed to give out another reminder in regards to the funds available for COVID. And I want to stress this because that application due date again is May eleventh. Um, the Notice of Funding Availability was published in this past Saturday's newspaper, you can find it there. You can find it on our county's website. Application and instructions to complete that application are currently on the county's website. Again, that due date is May eleventh. We don't typically accept applications via email, but we are at this time because our offices are still closed. Even when we are reopening, we look to limit the foot traffic in the building so that we can protect everyone. So please, those applications can be submitted via email, or you can mail them in. We will make the copies this time, we will do the printing. Please scan all of your necessary documentation and get those emailed over to us by May eleventh.
Thank you so much. Um, if you are not following VPA Thomas on Facebook, please follow me. Because one of the things I try to do is put information out there that you need to better yourself, to better and improve your business, to link up with people to help you grow your business in a growing Henry County. Uh, with that being said, I hope you will listen to everything that's been told to you. Stay home as much as possible, because COVID nineteen does kill. Likely or not, it does kill. I have personal friends who've been affected by this. I've had to entertain some deaths who've been affected by this, and that's one of the reasons I've been putting videos out there about COVID nineteen does kill. Please wash your hands, please sanitize your area, stay home as much as possible, and encourage your family and friends to practice safety, safe, healthy habits to make sure we live through this crisis, because we need everyone that's here. We need your talents, we need your love, we need your hugs, we need you here to help us in this world and make this a better place. More than anything, remember that Henry County is here to serve you, that's what we are, we work for you, we are your servants. Uh, when you send me your emails, you do remind me of that, but I am here to work for you to make things as good as possible. Thank you, Ms. Shannon, for your time, your energy today. I hope you guys gained some insightful information. I'm looking forward to providers linking up with our Community Development Block Grants. Thank you again for all that you do, and we are signing off. Contact us via emails. Bye everybody, thank you for participating. Have a great day.
I am John, and I am here to help you with your COVID-19 situation. First of all, thank you to those of you who have joined us in social distancing during this coronavirus crisis. And last but not least, a reminder to you that follow the guidelines as we set by the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention to help us all with this major health crisis, COVID-19. For those of you already following these guidelines, we thank you and appreciate your partnership during this emergency. For others, we urge you to follow these five simple steps to help stop the coronavirus so that you can all be back to normal again. Lock your hands up. If it's hard to see, do so into your airbag. Don't touch your face. Practice social distancing by leaving six feet between you and others. And last but not least, it is so time for more in-depth information on the new coronavirus, please visit cbc.org or our Henry County website. Thank you.